Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, September 18th, 2018. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on the town website for a listing and application. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer from Selectman Townsend.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Now it is time for citizen participation. It's the portion of the evening that we set aside for those that might like to address the board. We ask that you keep your thoughts to three minutes or less to give others the chance to speak. Was there anyone from the town that wanted to speak? Yes, sir. Name and address when you sit.
Alan Jermaine, 24 Pine. Hi, how are you?
How are you?
I'm very happy and it's with great enthusiasm, I tell you, that we had our first Finance Committee meeting and it was taped, recorded by Area 58 last Thursday. It's up on their website. We have our own little banner now. Every Finance Committee meeting going forward will be recorded. I just think it's the residents', it's the taxpayers' money. They should know exactly the process that goes into this. It's a lot of hard work. I want to thank the town administrator for attending that meeting and the hidden hero, Meg Lemay. She was there. She gave us all an education on more information than I could absorb. So, thank you very much, Michael, Meg. And we have five vacancies on that board. We could have up to 11. We have six. So, anybody wants to get involved, come on down.
Thank you. Now, I understand it was a two and a half hour meeting?
It was. It was only because Mr. Melonowski insisted on giving us the slow version of the accounting process in the town of Carver. And then, he and another member got into some hypothetical stuff and I didn't have a hammer handy, so I couldn't do much with stopping it.
Are you suggesting, though, that if we have members of the audience that perhaps struck by insomnia, that this might be, that portion of the meeting might be one to catch?
Actually, it was, no, it was pretty good. I think it was really good. We got a lot of stuff out in the open and the process is transparent. And a lot of work goes into it. People don't understand, and I know I didn't, people don't understand the immense amount of work that goes into making the numbers work. And, you know, you just think it's a number on a piece of paper. It isn't, because it has to equal something at the end. So, a lot goes into it, a lot of discussion goes into it, and it's just, it's a hard job. So, and we couldn't do it. We're nothing compared to the support that we get from the town, from the accounting department. Meg is awesome. She's...
And yet, the people like an independent voice that's looking over the numbers from the town employees.
Absolutely.
So, we, and this is long overdue, so we really appreciate you getting that recorded. And, you know, maybe when, you know, as we approach town meeting, people are going to realize these numbers just didn't jump off a page and, you know, among fire.
No, they didn't. They absolutely didn't. So...
All right, Alan, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, just on that topic, just for a second, Alan, you may want to stay here for a second.
You're not going to pick me up, are you?
No, no, not at all.
No, but we're letting him speak again.
I know. It won't be for two and a half hours. I'm still hoarse from that night. Two other things that the Finance Committee is looking to do is have a meeting monthly and then every meeting meet with a different department. So, they want to start to get involved with how each one of the departments are doing. I think at the next meeting, we're going to have the Fire Department go in there, particularly as it's going to relate to some of their apparatus. And then, secondly, I believe you reached out to the Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee to have a joint...
Yes, we're trying to do a joint meeting with the Capital Outlay. The Fire Department's going to need a transfer for their PPE equipment. It's all out of date. So, win, lose, or draw, we're going to need to address that issue. They've got to come before Finance, they've got to come before Capital Outlay. Why make them do it twice? So, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Capital Outlay Committee and the Finance Committee. We can wrap that up. Whatever we need to do to either expedite it, or if there's concerns and delays and so forth, but the object is to get it done without putting the chief through too many hurdles. There's no need of him coming back and repeating the exact same thing over again a second time. And then, I understand he's got to come before the Selectmen. So, that's our intent. But, I want to stay with the Department heads each month, just so we get an idea of where are you? Where, you know, where do you think you're going? What does it look like? Do you suspect you're going to run short? Do you think you've got an overage? Just where are you? So, there's not that big giant cram in November, December, January. So...
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just want to thank you for getting these on television. I think it's so important to the town. And I think the Finance Committee is so important to the town that I hope residents who are interested in getting involved will step forward and put in an application.
That would be great.
I think it would be great to have a full committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else that wanted to address the board this evening? There being none, we'll move forward with the agenda. Next is an appointment to the Recreation Committee. Ellen Sordillo, you have her application. Ellen, are you here?
I am.
Please step forward.
If you... Shake everyone's hand.
Well, sure. Thank you for your letter. It was very informative. Certainly gave us your history and a good sense of why you're interested in the Recreation Committee. Did you want to add anything before our consideration?
You know, I think I've always been interested in civic matters. Many years ago, I worked for a company called Jordan Marsh and I worked in one of the smaller stores. The larger stores had been union and the smaller stores weren't, so they weren't getting the same benefits as the major stores. And for some reason, people came up to me and asked me if I'd be interested in helping to start the union in the store. And I thought that was interesting. My father was thinking of Jimmy Hoffa the whole time and said, "Maybe that's not such a good idea." But, I felt like I could help benefit people in my job. I tried really hard. It came close. It never worked out. But, it really gave me a taste of what you can do civically if you really believe in helping people, helping towns now. I'm retired. I worked for Dr. Stein, who was a dentist here for a long time. And, you know, my children, grandchildren, as I said, have gone to schools here and it's a beautiful town. It's 41 years that we're here. And I just want to be a positive part of seeing new people come into town, enjoy what we have, keep them in town, as opposed to, "I just live in Carver." I want them to find Carver an interesting place to be and things to do for family and elderly and anyone else that, you know, wants to find a positive reason why to stay in this town, spend the money in that town, instead of spending it elsewhere.
Excellent. Why don't we get a motion on the table? We can have some further discussion.
I move to appoint Ellen to this committee.
Second. Further discussion? Do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I don't. I read your letter very carefully and I really appreciate your sense of civic duty and volunteerism. So, thank you.
I'm really looking forward to this. I can't tell you how much.
That's terrific. It's a great committee.
Retirement has been very boring and I need a little excitement in my life and I know Carver has plenty of excitement.
There's plenty going on. And on the Rec Committee, too. Yeah. It's a good committee.
Thank you.
I just want to echo that. I want to thank you for stepping up and helping the town. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much and welcome on board.
Thank you so much.
Being 7:10.
Being 7:10 will now have a public hearing on the transfer of the license from Green, between Green Jade Corp. and doing business as Tiki Kai Restaurant. Now, this may seem familiar, because it is familiar, because we actually did this before. However, there was a little confusion up at the ABC Department in Massachusetts, so we have to redo this. So, I don't think we have the representatives this evening correct, because it's simply reconfirming what we already confirmed. So, I'd accept a motion to approve the transfer.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It is so moved.
That's part of the motion.
All right. It not being 7:15 yet, but then the other item's going to be a little... Excuse me.
Do you want to do the unforeseen?
Let's do the unforeseen. Very good. Thank you. That's the Assistant Town Administrator coming to my rescue. All right. That's for the Selectmen update. Yes, we had an unforeseen request to use a town-owned property. This came from Emily Slaven. For, the name of the organization is Wicked Good Cause. And this is an event for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, nonprofit. What they want to do is to put out luminary bags and they'll pick them all up the same evening. And is this for Shetland Park or is this primarily Shetland Park?
Yeah, they might do the fire station in Shetland Park. They might do in front of the police station.
You really have to have your microphone in front of you, Assistant Town Administrator, question, so that we can hear you.
Yeah, they'll probably put them in Shetland Park in front of the fire station. They might do in front of the old fire station.
Okay. All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Yeah. I second this. I actually planned on speaking about this in my Selectmen's notes. I think this is a great cause, so I think we should absolutely approve this.
Excellent. And this is something that came in late and so, since it'll take place prior to our next meeting, it's for Saturday, the 29th, where I wanted to make sure we got this in. Motion and second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. It is now 7:15 and we have a poll hearing for two new polls on Ward Street. Are there any representatives here to speak to that? Please step forward and give us your name and general identification.
Good evening. My name is Donna Howarth, representing...
Could you speak right into the microphone, please?
Donna Howarth, representing EverSource, in reference to the two new polls on Ward Street. And it's to provide service to the new solar farm that's going way in the back of the cranberry bog.
I think we have plot plans in our packet that we've had a chance to review. These aren't going to be a nuisance of any sort. They're, you know, set back appropriately from the road.
Yes.
Questions from the board?
I just always ask, you have notified butters of the public hearing? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
We'll throw a motion on the table. Someone want to move the approval?
I move the approval.
Second.
Were there any butters here that wanted to speak this evening? There being none? If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move to recognition of School Resource Officer Fred Mello for his years of service. I'd like to ask Fred to step forward along with Chief Dufly and our State Representative, Susan Gifford.
Good evening and thank you for taking some time to recognize and honor the service Officer Fred Mello has provided the town of Carver, the city of New Bedford, and the citizens of the Commonwealth. Fred has been a police officer for the past 28 years. He began his career in New Bedford in 1989, where he worked in the Patrol Division, including as a community police officer and also as a detective. 14 years ago, Fred joined the Carver Police Department's team. Over the years, Fred has always proven that bringing him aboard was a great decision. He spent many years as a patrol officer and I was fortunate to have him apply to be the first school resource officer within the Carver Police Department. In 2015, he accepted the SRO position and hit the ground running, working hard to define the role and gain acceptance by both the students and school staff. In that effort, he was immensely successful. Fred's care and concern for the youth of our community was always clearly visible in his actions as a school resource officer. He put a great deal of time and effort into improving the relationship between our department and the kids. Along with his daily duties, Fred worked toward improving the kids' safety by being an integral part of bringing the ALICE program to the school, which is a program that helps by offering more safety options to our kids and staff in the event of an active shooter event. Additionally, he brought a program called Handle With Care to the school, which he'd learned about in his SRO training. This program provides for the sharing of information with the school about children who may have been exposed to traumatic events outside of school and who may need a little extra care because of it. He was also key in moving forward the High Five Friday idea and recruited many of our officers to come and help greet youngsters on their way to school in the morning. He worked with Sergeant Azuro to make the Junior Police Explorer Program a great success and he always helped out with Carver Night Out. And he was definitely loved by the school kids and the staff. Fred has done a great job building up the SRO position and has paved the way for Officer Wall to continue to build on that success. I am personally grateful for the opportunity to have worked with Fred and will miss him. And I would ask the Honorable Board of Selectmen to recognize Fred Mello for his years of service with us. We have a plaque that I'd like to present to him and Representative Gifford has a citation from the State House that she'd like to read. And I don't know if you have any questions or anything you want to say to Fred before we do that, but we brought him with us. You can see he's tan and dressed well for being retired.
Sarah. Thank you. Officer Mello, I want to particularly point out how much you did as a school resource officer with the organization, the Young People's Alliance of Carver, Y-PAC. That after-school program was put in for drug prevention and I've never seen kids love a police officer so much in my whole life. They were all over you. And so, I just really appreciate that work and I think a lot of those kids will never forget you, you know? And you're a great role model. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
I just, I echo that, Officer Mello. Thank you for all your years of service and I especially want to thank you for bringing the ALICE program into town. I think it's so important and just appreciate everything you've done. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I guess I'd like to add that I had a conversation probably a year ago, year and a half ago. I have a couple of kids in Carver here, members of my church, and we were having a general conversation and I asked them about you and they said, "You're cool." So, you know, that pretty much told me everything I needed to know, that this was working. So, that's the seal of approval. So, why don't we step forward? I'm sorry, Representative Gifford, did you want to say anything?
I would. Thank you. First of all, Chief Dufly, thank you very much for asking me to be a part of this recognition ceremony for Friday. It's very nice to be here and to be able to present you with a citation from the Massachusetts House. So, if I could, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Sedgus Fred O. Mello." I got that right, didn't I? Thank you, Chief. You helped me well on that. "In recognition of your 29 years of valuable service as a police officer in the city of New Bedford and the town of Carver and as a school resource officer. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given the third day of August 2018 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and offered by yours truly." Congratulations and thank you for all of your service. Enjoy your retirement.
Well, Chief, I was thinking if you want to read what's on that plaque, then we can all step forward and take some pictures.
So, we had a plaque made up for Officer Mello. Presented to Officer Sedgus Fred O. Mello, 1989 to 2018. "In recognition and appreciation for your 29 years of police service and your outstanding service to the Carver Police Department and the citizens of the town of Carver. This department and our community are better places to live and work, thanks to your many years of dedicated service. On your final tour of duty, August 3rd, 2018."
Excellent. I'd ask the board to step forward and... Congratulations. Really appreciate the service. Fred, you got to go first.
All right.
You can thank who's with you. Gifford and our own Sarah Hewens for their primary victories and wish you well as you go forward. All right. Next item on the agenda is appointment of a special police officer, Jim Moscato. I'll turn it over to Chief Dufly.
Thank you again. Tonight, I have an additional request to add an officer to our list of special police officers to work on private paid details. I don't have him here tonight, unfortunately, he has an event with his family tonight, but Assistant Superintendent of Law Enforcement, James Moscato, has been a longtime employee of the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department. He currently heads up the Law Enforcement Division within the department. He's worked for the department for over 30 years, where he's been a K-9 officer and also worked within BCI. Adding, Jim Moscato as a special police officer will give us another very qualified person to assist with filling details. Again, he'd be here tonight, but he has a family obligation. So, I highly recommend or request the board vote to appoint Jim Moscato as a special police officer of the town of Carver. Any questions?
Let's put a motion on the table first.
So moved.
All right. Questions from the board?
I have no questions.
All right. There being none. Motion has been made and seconded to appoint Jim Moscato as a special police officer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for recognizing Officer Mello tonight. It was very...
Of course.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. We now move to the Pine Street Right-of-Way. Request per Planning Board for the Board of Selectmen to consider granting reciprocal licenses access to properties for road layout originally begun by Plymouth County Commissioners but never completed. And here to sort that out for us is our own Planner, Stephen Cole.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm joined this evening with Amy Quiselle from KP Law, who frankly is going to speak to you more about the solution proposals. I can talk a little bit about the problem. We received a...
Could you make sure you have the microphone right in front of you there, please?
How's this? We received an application from Edaville Family Theme Park to do their parking lot over as a paved lot. And while conducting our TRC, our technical review, we learned that the right-of-way sometime in the 50s or 60s was amended or changed. And although the county commissioners never acted on it, the fact remains, we should probably remedy this in some way.
I'm sorry, Stephen. What did you say, in the 50s, 60s, what?
In the 50s or 60s, it's kind of indeterminable as yet when the right-of-way was reassigned or redone. And so, working with the applicant, the neighbors, and KP Law, we're hoping to arrive at some kind of a solution that preserves and protects the interests of those abutters, but also maintains our own interests as well on Pine Street. So, with that, if I can kick it over to Amy to talk about some of the solutions?
Sure. Thank you. So, what we have are we have parking spots that are essentially on the right-of-way, on the Pine Street right-of-way. We have a plan that was submitted with the special permit. It's not an official survey. It doesn't have meets and bounds or anything like that. However, because Pine Street in some way was laid out by the county commissioners, I do think that the engineer would be able to easily get the meets and bounds of the way. So, the first thing is that the engineer has to get the meets and bounds of the way and present us with a survey. There's then a decision to be made by the Board of Selectmen, which is to allow those spots on the town right-of-way. And the way that we would recommend that happen would be a license and a license to Edaville. A license would contain indemnities and things like that. But, right now, the way that the street is actually on the ground is there's the pavement, there's a sidewalk, and then on the other side of the sidewalk is a berm that will have trees and then there will be the parking spaces. So, you know, dependent on how the board feels, if the board is okay with those parking spaces encroaching into the right-of-way, the license with a plan that has meets and bounds, we would clearly define the area of the license that they could use.
And what about the people's property on the other side of the street?
The other side of the street would not be affected. The pavement of Pine Street will stay the same.
But, from what the Plymouth County Commissioners did originally, if I understand it, is that the, actually, the right-of-way goes a little bit on to some of the front properties of the people along Pine Street? But, we're just leaving that alone?
Correct. We'd have to get, again, we'd have to get a survey plan from the engineer, but I can't tell you how many roadways have, the right-of-way has people's property, people's front yards encroaching onto it.
So, are you asking for some action from the board this evening or is there more work to be done?
No. There's definitely more work to be done, particularly the survey plan. I think that we're just here to let you guys know where we're, kind of where we're headed. We still have to go back to Edaville and ask them for a survey plan.
Now, something that came up and I talked to Mr. Cole about this earlier in the week was there's also been a lot of flooding in the roadways down there. And my understanding is that that is not attributed necessarily to Edaville. However, would anything that's being contemplated here inhibit or add to the flooding issue?
No. If the Board of Selectmen are amenable to allowing the encroachment into the right-of-way, then those spaces are considered part of the parking lot and part of the parking lot that's before the Planning Board for a special permit. And therefore, they are subject to Planning Board rules and regulations as to drainage and they will be improving the drainage. In fact, surprisingly, paving the parking lot will actually increase the infiltration rate, because they will, they'll have chambers and so the drainage will most likely improve.
And I'll just throw it out here, because I mentioned it to Mr. Cole earlier in the week, is that since Edaville's undertaking this massive project to do all that, I think it would behoove us, since we have a flooding problem down there for our residents, to just have a conversation with Edaville to see if there's any sort of work that could be done together. You know, as long as they're taking on a massive project like that, you know, we might be able to kill two birds with one stone and address the flooding issue for the residents as well.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the board?
Yes. So, my question, thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, no problem.
Both of you. My question is, it seems to me that we should be getting a survey plan from the county commissioners, not from the landowner. Because they laid out the land and who knows what's been done since?
Right. So, because they would get the meets and bounds from the county commissioners, they would, so on their survey plan, it would indicate the county commissioner's layout plan. And then, we would need, because some of the parking spaces go back onto their property, we would need actually a plan such as this that encompasses both Pine Street, the parking spaces that are encroaching on that, and property beyond that.
Well, I guess my question is, I don't understand why you're allowing the landowner to show the meets and bounds. Why wouldn't you use the original county commissioner's map?
They would have to. And so they would reference that on the plan. It would be referenced. They have, and it's a surveyed plan, so it's stamped. So what it will say on Pine Street, it will say, for example, "laid out by county commissioners such and such a date and found in, you know, book something, page something." So it would be, they would have to find that, and they would have to make sure. And then the other thing is, they would be surveying, they would also be surveying the, you know, the lot, their own lot. So we know exactly that they're, that they meet, that they actually match up.
Okay, all right.
Because unfortunately, with county commissioners laying out roads, they've been doing, they've been laying out roads, I think, since the 1800s. And so, they're not always-
They have no records?
They do. Oh, no, no, no. In fact, actually, I was telling Stephen, they actually have very, pretty good records. They used to be at the old courthouse in Plymouth, which is now Plymouth Town Hall. And they were, they're all in the basement, but they actually, if you're willing to go through the basement, but they actually do have very, 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 pretty well-kept records.
So they're at the registry of deeds now?
And now they would be there, yeah.
Other questions?
What kind of a time period are you looking at here? How long?
So that actually depends upon the applicant, and they have an open hearing in front of Planning.
That's correct. We have, we're in the midst right now of continuing the hearing. They will be appearing before the Planning Board again on the 25th next week. It's our expectation, working with the applicant, that we're going to get this done before the Planning Board takes any action, likely in October.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, well, thank you for the update, and so we'll see you maybe within a month or two?
I expect that.
Excellent.
It's out of order, but I'll look forward.
I appreciate that. In a conversation with Stephen, I understand that, I think you said about 20 feet of Pine Street sits on, across the street, on our land. If we're, and my next-door neighbor and my other next-door neighbor and so forth, the street kind of comes down, you know? If we're doing stuff to fix this with Edaville, is there a way we can fix this with the residents? And what happens if somewhere along the line, someone decides down the road to follow the original county commissioner's map and decide to take that land?
So your question is whether or not there's some way of eliminating the right-of-way on the resident's property and just awarding that to the residents?
Well, if I may, though, you've been using that land for, you probably know the legal number of years, but after a certain number of years, that's your land.
Okay. Is that correct?
I mean, it's a town right-of-way, so I guess the only entity that could do something would be the town? Is that-
Correct, correct. Usually adverse possession does not apply to right-of-ways. And the town.
So I suppose it's just from a, you know, I'm just asking the question just because-
All right, Stephen, is that something that we could ask Planning to look into? To see if we can just, as long as we're correcting all of this, why not just eliminate that? So-
Do it all when they come back and-
I mean, future sales, you know, you don't go through the whole thing about the fact that you got a right-of-way going across your front yard, that sort of thing. Okay, good. Thank you.
And thank you also for working to keep their drainage situation on Edaville's property. Because if they're going to be upgrading the drainage, they should be benefiting from that.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amy.
Stephen, are you staying here for the MVP grant discussion?
If you'll have me, Mr. Chairman, I'll be very glad to.
All right. Next up is a discussion of the MVP grant, $196,979 by the Planning Department. Are you also representing the Gap Two grant as well?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I am.
All right, it is, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
So just as a matter of reference, the MVP program, better known as, or most commonly known as, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. This is from the state's website. I'd like to read to you a brief introduction for what the program is. The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program, or MVP, provides support for cities and towns in Massachusetts to begin the process of planning for climate change resiliency and implementing priority projects. It goes on to state that there are two phases to this. The town was awarded some funds in the initial phase so that we can contract with who we ultimately decided was Fussin' O'Neill to assist us for preparing for what's called the Action Grant. The Action Grant is what the number there that you read a moment ago, Mr. Clark, the $196,979 is what was awarded to the community on the heels of a core team meeting that identified a couple of areas that we should focus on in order to prepare for climate change. Selectwoman Hewens was on that committee, and what we decided ultimately was we need to explore ways to insulate ourselves from drought, given that we have an agrarian economy and a large number of growers who don't always have access to the amount of water that they need. Coupled, of course, with the threat of fire in our community in the past, in '54 and '67, and the type of trees that we have in our proximity to the state forest, the fire department expressed some concerns during that process that they don't always have access to water in those instances. We've re-engaged with Fussin' O'Neill, and our intent at this point is to do some surveys and studies to ascertain where we might be able to drill more wells. It's our expectation that we will probably have a third phase to this, which is the implementation. We have to have this program complete by June, end of June 2019, and it's my expectation that we'll be coming back to you with periodic updates. Regretfully, there's not much to talk about at present, because frankly, we just haven't really begun. I will be re-engaging the core team, FYI, Ms. Hewens. We'll be re-engaging the core team in a couple of weeks, likely the second week in October.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions from the board? We'll move to Gap Two.
Okay. Gap Two is another state program that was largely designed to, well, fill the gap between the cost for implementing or upgrading wastewater and drinking water infrastructure. North Carver Water District partnered with the Town of Carver and the Planning Board to submit this application. We were awarded, as I'm recalling, $58,000 and change? Yes, $58,230. The purpose for that amount was so that we could purchase a new appropriately-sized generator. The one that we have at one of our pump houses is, by all estimates, three to four times too large. And whenever we lose power and we have to fire up the propane generator, we have to hope that it's not too cold, because propane won't actually combust under certain circumstances. Similarly, given the largesse of this generator, we have to put a load bearer on it. We're effectively heating outside whenever we have to fire up this generator. So although we have a $58,000 grant, the order of magnitude for that is much greater, because the new system or the new generator we're proposing to install is more fuel-efficient, so we'll have some cost savings there. Additionally, the generator that's in there now can be surplused by the North Carver Water District and sold. So the order of magnitude from this $58,000 is estimated to be at about $503,000 because of the sale of surplus assets and energy savings.
Excellent. Questions? Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I will just mention that it's our goal to have that new generator installed by mid-October, before the cooling season.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Chairman, if I could just real briefly, you know, I don't think Steve gave himself enough credit. These are two grants that Stephen took the initiative to do, and certainly has paid off for the town in almost a quarter billion dollars in direct funding, and let alone probably about $700,000, $800,000 in indirect benefit to the town. So I just want to make sure he's recognized for his effort in putting these together.
Great. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, board.
Okay. Now we go to Serpide. We have Paul Mission with us from Serpide to discuss a request to conduct aerial photography of the Town of Carver. I will allow you, sir, to introduce yourself and fill us in.
Good evening. My name is Paul Mission. I'm the Transportation Planning Manager with the Southeast Regional Planning Economic Development District. That's a long name, so we'll just call it Serpide from now on. A lot easier and a lot kinder to everyone. Essentially, we're the regional planning agency for 27 communities. And as part of our duties and our federal funding, we're obligated to do a regional transportation plan update every four years. This is mandated by federal highway and federal transit administrations. And part of that is going and doing an assessment as well for existing as well as for future conditions of our transportation system, including bridges, highways, roads, public transit, aeronautics, you name it. We have to look at it and do an assessment. This is a very cumbersome process, and it involves a lot of public input. And part of that public input, we have to go out to the public and pound the pavement, so to speak, and get people interested to comment on some of the transportation issues that are happening within our region. And part of that is trying to figure out clever ways to not only promote our plan, but also promote the southeastern Mass region. We recently purchased a drone for doing a number of things, mainly for transportation, for assessments of existing roads, bridges. We're also using it for what we call our flood hazard inundation program, which is looking at bridges, or dams, excuse me, that might be compromised and other environmental-sensitive areas that we can't reach by foot. Sending a drone up and hovering over it and taking some pictures and doing some surveillance makes it a lot easier for our data collection efforts. So to get to the reason why we are using the drone and why we sent out letters to all of our communities in August is that we wanted to let the towns know that we are flying a drone over your community for a couple reasons. One, so we can get some assessments of some of the major infrastructure issues that may be going on, but also to gather some of the attributes that make southeastern Mass so great. In Carver, Edaville Railroad, King Richard's Fair are a couple things that come to mind in terms of positive attributes. And then for transportation, Route 44 is one of the biggest transportation arteries going through the town. So what we're doing is, we're going to all the other communities, as well as Carver, looking for basically your permission so we can fly these drones, or fly the drone, but also to see if there's anything else that the town would like to include in the list of either attributes or transportation facilities that they would like part of this drone program. The result will be a five-to-10-minute video that we use for promotional purposes off our website to entice people to come in and take our surveys and be active in our transportation planning process. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, questions from the board?
Just for the record and for people who may not know, what would the drone be assessing specifically?
Specifically, it would be, for this purpose, the promotional video would just be a high-altitude photograph of, say, Route 58 and Route 44. With the attributes, it would just be another high, the best way to describe it is a bird's-eye view of different attributes. If King Richard's Fair and the Edaville Railroad are favorable for us to just take some bird's-eye-view shots to show as an attribute to promote southeastern Mass, that's essentially what we're looking at. Although the drone can do more, there is software out there that can help us with processing imagery for 3D modeling of certain land parcels. There's also capabilities for doing infrared. We do not have that capability with our particular drone. And there are others that I can, it's similar to a LiDAR style of mapping.
So your drone isn't, I just want to understand. I understand your video is one thing, but what is the drone doing for Serpide's transportation plan? Is it hovering? You said it would be hovering above a dam, and is it just trying to figure out if the dam needs to be repaired?
It would, it can do assessments, like I said, a 3D model. So it would take measurements, so then you could come back to the office and do a 3D rendering, which would show possible structure failure or, you know, the condition of the dam. We're kind of, I guess, in the beginning stages of this whole process. We have a professional drone pilot as part of our staff, who has done this before. But as a staff, we're just learning as we go along with the benefits from it. But right now, we're looking at it as a means to gather information over busy roadways in terms of traffic flow. Traffic counter can provide us with the volumes, but seeing how the people drive also provides us a lot of information on road safety issues, as well as congestion issues. We're looking to learn more about this aspect of the drone in terms of analysis as we go along. The 3D modeling actually is very powerful, because we could go into doing lot assessments upon request. We did one for the Town of Wareham for the Tremont Nail Company. And what's nice about it is it allows us to get into the back of the property, which is not readily accessible on foot. So we were able to provide the town with a lot of information regarding that piece of property that they're using for potential redevelopment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
I see a lot of benefits to the town with this, especially with some of these inaccessible properties that you mentioned, so I think it's a good idea.
And I heard you ask that you'd be open to suggestions from the town?
Yes.
For additional purposes? I'm thinking if we can get a note out to departments that if any of them feel that there may be a value, that they can get their thoughts over to you and ask you to incorporate them into your actions.
Sure.
Leading to the town?
That's a good idea.
Any further discussion? Someone want to make a motion to approve to allow Serpide to fly the drone over the Town of Carver?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to leave the board a few things about our regional transportation plan. It is a postcard that talks about the regional transportation plan, but more importantly, gives a QR reader and our website address, so you could go in and learn more about our plan. We also have a brochure, some brochures with a synopsis of what the plan's all about. And also on our website is some sample videos of our drone activities and some of the flights that we've flown. I encourage you all to take a look at it, and I welcome any thoughts and suggestions.
All right, leave those with us. Elaine, should we hold those at the Selectmen's Office? Put them downstairs where we have some information as people walk in? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, and what seems somewhat apropos, stormwater management. We had a little bit of an exposure to that today.
Say we could use the drone to collect stormwater.
Please identify.
Good evening. John Woods, Operations and Maintenance Department.
I'm Gabrielle Belfit from Ty &amp; Bond. That's it? Oh, I'm just- No, John, that was all-
Take as much time as you need. Thank you, though.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. John and I were here about a year ago, and we provided you with an update at the time of pending state and federal stormwater legislation that has since been approved this past June, July of 2018. As you know, Carver is by definition a small urbanized community. It's one of 260 municipalities in Massachusetts that is currently authorized to discharge stormwater under EPA Small MS4 General Permit. The permit has expired, and under the new general permit, Carver must reapply, submitting notice of intent to EPA to seek authorization from EPA to continue to discharge stormwater. So in lieu of doing another PowerPoint presentation, we put together this summary of Carver's stormwater management program. It presents highlights of EPA's program, presents the basics of the six minimum control measures, some highlights about Carver's water resources. And on the back, it's an outline of what Carver will need to implement under the stormwater program in the following year. Also in your packet is, and I have copies in case anyone in the general public would-
Thank you very much.
Anyone else want a copy? A few copies. Such a nice brochure. Also in your packets are the Notice of Intent Form. And the notice of intent is basically an outline which pulls together all of the pertinent data that is needed for the new permit. And it's an outline of the six minimum control measures that Carver must implement over a period of five years in order to be in- measures that Carver must implement over a period of five years in order to be in compliance with the regulations. So the descriptions included in the NOI are extremely broad, and where the specifics of the program happen are in the Stormwater Management Plan. Carver is, has started a Stormwater Management Task Force, and we met recently and began work on a working draft of Carver's Stormwater Management Plan. Individuals from the task force have been given tasks to review specific sections of the Stormwater Management Plan that pertain to their particular areas of expertise and how the Stormwater Management Program interfaces with their department and their program elements. We're here tonight, it's part of the public process, it's required that we have a public meeting to answer any questions about the Notice of Intent. And specifically, we're here to get your approval for submitting the Notice of Intent to EPA and MasDEP. And if I could present, actually, I'd like to present all of you with just one page of updates. And then we did use two copies.
Thank you.
Copy for you and Michael. We updated a page two. We updated the list of Carver's stormwater outfalls. Through the efforts of DPW, we're able to continue to refine the mapping that was started probably 10 years ago.
At least.
And our objective is to make sure that we're reporting correctly outfalls that are discharging to known water bodies listed on the state's list of impaired water bodies in Massachusetts. So there remain about, less than a dozen, I believe it's about eight outfalls, and John will work over the next five years to try to eliminate or provide treatment for those remaining outfalls. And at this point, really, I just want to let you know that the Stormwater Management Plan will be put up on the town's website, and the town will also be developing some public education content with a website called Carver Cares About Water. And we'll be helping John and the Stormwater Management Task Force develop that material. And if there's any questions from the board or the public?
I guess one quick question I had was, now that we're going in for another five-year permit, I think what I'm hearing is that the EPA is now tightening up regulations so that what we were able to discharge in the past, they want to see that reduced as we move forward in time?
Well, it's not really, it's not changing the definition of stormwater or allowable stormwater discharges. It's not changing that. It's providing specific best management practices for controlling discharge that are going, especially to impaired water bodies or where there's total daily maximum loads of nutrients that have been defined. It's looking at your good housekeeping practices and doing pollution prevention. So there's a lot of prevention, there's a lot of public education involved. There's looking at your town bylaws and regulations that have to do with erosion control and post-stormwater construction specifications. And it's kind of just looking back at them and adding some additional language to tighten them up. But as far as the discharge goes, it's still, you know, it's recognizing that there are types of discharge that are fine and the prohibited types of discharge. Those definitions have not changed from 2003.
And you're looking for the board to approve your submission of the new?
Correct. And just very specifically, what I would like is to have the two copies that I handed you signed. And then I will submit one to EPA and one to MasDEP. And the signature is on the back. That's it. So if...
Other questions from the board?
Yes. Just as a matter of clarity, there are two ponds mentioned.
Yep.
I'm the former conservation agent, so there's never a real correct map of Carver, I've found, so. So where is Rocky Meadow Brook Pond when it's home?
Rocky Meadow Brook Pond, I am going to have to say that I didn't bring a map with me, but I believe it's on the south...
It's got to be the southwest part of...
Southwest part. I looked this morning, we went over them all where they were. So we have a map that goes with this, that shows where the outfalls are, shows where all the catch basins are, and names the individual ponds that are on there. And I'm sorry, I didn't bring a copy of the map.
That's okay, because, yeah, anyway, so like Fresh Meadow has five different names.
Yes. These are the names that are listed on the state list of integrated waters.
Some of them aren't correct, but that's okay.
Well, you go by like the codes there, and you can type in the code and it will...
No, as long as the code is right. So South Meadow Pond, is that Ward Street Pond?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to have to defer.
Okay. No, that's fine.
Some of them I don't know, some I do.
Yeah. Just a little clarification there.
Thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
I was curious about Rocky Meadow Brook Pond, too. No, I think that's all.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we approve submission of the Notice of Intent to the DEP and EPA.
Second. Further discussion?
Being done, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I guess I'll sign on behalf of the board. That's what you're asking for.
That is. Yep. The deadline for submitting this is October 1st, so I will be getting this in a week early. Thanks for all your work, both of you.
Thank you.
And I'll leave these copies as well if you want to put them in some appropriate place, so. I don't think additional copies of the NOI probably are not of interest, but I do have And the Stormwater Management Task Course will be coming before the board once a year, probably about this time, a little bit earlier, maybe at the end of August, to give you an update on what they have accomplished during the year. And John, are you going to be the designated signator for going forward?
Either me or I believe Mr. Chairman has been in the past.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's it.
Being done. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We have now reached the Town Administrator Update on Capitol Building Project Updates to start.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for yielding me an additional 20 minutes tonight. So, real briefly, the elementary school, we're going to be having a grand opening ceremony. It'll be this Thursday at 5:00 PM. That's open to everyone in the community, and it goes from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. That project continues to remain on budget, actually under budget, and for those that haven't toured the facility, I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised as to how well that property came out to satisfy the school's education program. It's something we're very proud of. Moving forward, the Middle High School Accelerated Repair Project for new roof doors and windows, that project has been completed, and now we're in the final audit stage with MSBA so we can get their full reimbursement back. So that project has been completed. The Middle High School Track and Field, that project is nearing, actually, it's over 90% complete. If you haven't had a chance to drive by, please do it. The field is now fully functional. All of the turf pellets have been put on there, the goalposts are up, and some of the stands were just delivered yesterday, I believe. So that project is nearing completion. They're in the process of doing their landscaping in the areas around the field, but the field is fully functional at this point, and it really looks sharp. They did a really nice job with that. Our police station project is moving forward. We have submitted a revised program to the architect in August, late August, and we're waiting for them to come back with some revised designs for the committee to take a look at and move forward to the next step. So that committee is very active.
On the police station, if I remember correctly, we're sort of waiting to get a sense of what we need for size and whatnot, and once we have that, that's when we'll start narrowing down exactly where to locate the building?
So that is correct. They have, you know, started to narrow the size down. We've sent back some revisions for that. Right now, the committee's priority, if we had to rank the sites, would be where the playground is on that side of the library.
You want to be very clear, not where the playground is.
Adjacent to.
Adjacent to the playground, not taking over the playground.
That is correct. Adjacent to the playground.
You're talking about the playground site plan that shows an area for a 12,000-square-foot building?
In that area, yes. So that would be on the far side of the library. And obviously, then we're still looking to try to figure out what to do with the town hall complex behind where the old police station is, too. But right now, the committee's leaning towards that virgin land over there to put the facility on that site.
But again, until you actually have an architect's rendering and know the dimensions specifically...
That's right. Still conceptual at this point. Still conceptual. Once the committee comes back with a final recommendation, they are going to, we are going to provide an update to the Board of Selectmen and explain, you know, what the recommendations are and why they came to those conclusions for your deliberations. Because at the end of the day, the selectmen are going to have to authorize what site to put the facility on. We're just not there yet, but that process is ongoing. I also want to address a couple other things before I get into the bonding. There was been some discussions regarding some of the donation bins, the storage bins from the Red Cross and other entities that are around town. Just so everyone is fully aware, in the past, what has happened is particularly the chairman of the Board of Health, if they see any issues around town, they generally notify the health agent, and those issues are normally corrected within 24 hours. There has been more and more people trying to fill those dumpsters up or put things around it. As a result, the chairman of the Board of Health did receive a copy of some regulations that Mr. Bob Beldman provided them from California, that the chairman on August 18th began discussions on whether or not Carver should put its own regulations in there. And tonight, they had a further discussion on that, and they're going to be moving forward with adopting some regulations for these storage bins going forward by the Board of Health. What we have found is that some of the companies appear to no longer be operational, but yet people are still coming in emptying those bins. In addition, it has been determined that some of the landowners where these bins are located are getting paid to actually lease them the spots for these properties. So I think the direction that the Board of Health is going to take is to put together regulations that would have an annual license for the landowner to come in for permission to put these storage bins, and that's then is it'll be up to the landowner to make sure that his tenant, who's leasing this out, is maintaining them to make sure that everything is clean. So that's, again, that is an operation that's been going on by the Board of Health, that's where that issue for any sanitary issues in the town are addressed.
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate that we have citizens that decide that that's stuff that they aren't even willing to take to savers, they think it's okay to drop it by one of these donation bins. These bins are there to help, you know, the poor, the needy, the homeless, and, you know, I don't want to see the bins removed. However, they do have to remain sanitary, and they need to be policed. So I'm glad to hear that it sounds as if we're taking corrective action on that. But at the same time, I certainly don't want them eliminated because they serve too good a cause. Absolutely.
In addition to that, on our website, we have a letter from Public Power and Good Energy. This related the community electricity aggregation program that we discussed at our last meeting. So we do have a letter that lists that on the website, and I believe one of the questions that was asked the last meeting, which again is addressed in here, is this price increase will be approximately $1.80 per month for the average property that uses 600 kilowatts of power per month, which is still significantly below what the market rate is if you did not have this program. So again, that is all posted on the website, and there's actually an additional website that you can link to for more information and a phone number for anyone to call regarding that. As I move forward into the bonding approval, we have released the bonds, and they're out for Wall Street to bid on those currently right now. We're hoping to have the results back later this week. With that, we have scheduled a special meeting with the Board of Selectmen on Janu, I'm sorry, September 26 at 8:00 AM for the sole purpose of approving the bonds. And again, that'll be for about $11.85 million in bonds to cover the Middle High School, for the police station, and also for the roof of the library. I also want to...
Excuse me, just on the bonding, my understanding is that we got a, almost as good a rating as we could have gotten, given our circumstances. I think the two things they cited, I guess one of the things they cite is the general wealth of the community. Did I understand that correctly? Is that so that a rich community is automatically given a better bond rating than one that's not as rich on a socioeconomic scale?
Right. Because what the rating does is it evaluates the community's ability to pay. And that ability to pay has certain metrics in there. One of them is what's the overall wealth of the community and the income of the community that if the town had to raise taxes, that it could pay. And the other major aspect is how is the town managed and run? And from that perspective, just to read a few of the things that came out of the bond rating, we have a strong economy, strong management with good financial policies and practices under our financial management assessment methodology. We have strong budgetary performance, strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, an adequate debt and contingent liability position. Basically, it's a strong institutional framework. Currently, right now, the value of the town as relates to property in the town, both buildings and land, is $1.3 billion. Again, they emphasize the town's management is very strong. They do raise some concerns that if they see any downward pressure on our OPED liabilities that we're not maintaining those, that they could come in and actually reduce our bond rating. So that's a concern they do have as far as making sure that we maintain our financial policies and OPED components. And then, Ron, as you said, is that, they said they could raise the ratings of the town if the town's wealth and income indicators strengthen to a level we view as comparable with those of other high-rated peers. So without us having oceanfront property or large industrial base in the town, we just don't have the economic wealth to pump us up to a triple A. Having said that, when you read their report, they have nothing bad to say. It's all extremely positive. So, you know, this is the best report that, as you said, that we could have received subject to the wealth of the community changing. So I think everyone's very proud of that, and hopefully our bond rates will correspond to that rating. So again, we're going to be having a special meeting on the 26th at 8:00 AM, just so that the board can approve those bonds when they come back in. And obviously, you'll be approving the lowest bidder with the overall net.
The 25th, isn't it?
Twenty-six.
Wednesday?
Wednesday the...
I thought it was Tuesday, sorry.
Twenty, yes, you are correct.
I thought it was Tuesday as well.
The 25th. Yep. It's properly posted.
Mm-hmm.
So again, that'll be it that day. Any questions on the bonding at all? If I could just pass around our four-step budget process.
Is that any different from what you emailed out to us?
It is no different than what you have there. This is our process we do year over year. On one side, it's the capital budget, on the other side, it's the operational budget. Again, nothing changes in this. Again, nothing changes in this compared to last year. It keeps the same four steps. We did modify some of the dates to correspond with a proposed town meeting. Generally, we try to have our town meeting the week before the school vacation week in April, which is also before the elections. Last year, we did extend that just due to some extenuating circumstances. So we did move it back two weeks last year, but this is proposed to keep on the regular schedule the week before the school vacation. Then from there, all budgets have to be finalized 30 days prior to April 9th. So we're looking to finalize the budget on May 5th is the date that we're anticipating wrapping everything up.
March.
March 5th, sorry. March 5th.
And we don't identify on this sheet when the deadline for articles is, but we will be establishing that fairly early on to let people know when articles are going to be due?
That's correct.
We want to try to do that as early as possible to make sure they get vetted and are done, because I know last, it always seems to keep leaking forward as we're having additional reviews, so, you know, the earlier the better.
It's under step three at the bottom. Draft review warrant articles?
But not a date for them yet.
Finished Feb. 5.
Well, you can, if you want, tonight, you could establish the date for citizen petitions and articles that come in, and we could make it so that they're due on November 6. That'll give everybody a month to do it. You can announce that tonight, and I think...
I mean, that might be a little quick, but, you know, I think last year, we used December 20th.
Last year, we had two weeks that we had authorization to do it. So this would actually be almost five weeks.
I'm comfortable with that. I don't think you can do it too early. But you need to publicize it so that people are aware of it.
Right. So if you voted tonight, then we'll make sure that we get that out for people to be aware of.
People comfortable with it?
Of what date again?
November 6th.
I really think it's important to have time to vet these things, and I know we had the budget numbers ready to go a month ahead of time, but the articles were not ready to go a month ahead of time.
Correct.
So I'd like to do that if at all possible.
So that gives people about six weeks?
That's correct.
And last year, I think we did have two or three weeks.
Mr. Pleasure of the board?
Yeah, so...
I'll second it. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
The last thing I just have there is the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District. We're still working with the board members. We did extend an offer to hire an executive director, and at the same token, the board did rank their first, second, and third candidate. So we're in the process of negotiating with those applicants. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to Board of Selectmen update. Mr. Townsend.
Well, thanks. We talked earlier about the Carver Go Wicked Gold program, but I just wanted to congratulate that group for all they've been doing to help eliminate childhood cancer and bring, you know, more, you know, more notice to that situation. They've had a number of successful events so far this month. They have more planned, and I thought the luminary event they have coming up was a great event. And you can find out more about there. Let me make sure I have the website correct here, wickedgoodcause.org. And also, this Saturday, the 23rd, the Third Annual Philadelphia Carver Donation Drive...
Sunday.
Sunday, I'm sorry. Yes, Sunday, thank you. It's taking place at the Carver Farmers Market from 12 to 4:00. So if people have a chance, stop by and bring some non-perishable food items. That's all I have.
Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say for the record about the last meeting we voted, where we voted to reorganize the numbers, I guess, on the town administrator's contract, and I voted against that. I just wanted to put it on the record, Elaine, that while I'm all in favor of transparency, I had never voted for the contract to start with, so I just felt it was inappropriate for me to vote for that reconfiguration for that reason. Moving on, I did want to congratulate everyone who participated in Carver Night Out in August. It was really so well organized this time, and not that it hasn't been before, but I liked it even better. I think it worked better this time. The arrangement of where the kids' games were, where the helicopter landed, where the booths were, the flow seemed to work really well. And so I just congratulate all the emergency departments, particularly the police, who put that together. I also wanted to thank the police department and the Young People's Alliance of Carver for their Junior Police Explorers Program. I went to two of their field trips. They had a prison visit, Plumuth County Jail, back in August, and then they had a boat ride day where they taught boating safety on Sampson's Pond. And the fire department also participated, as well as the environmental police. And the kids, well, we all had a blast. I had a blast, too. And the last thing I wanted to remind people of is that the last day to register to vote for the November 6 election is October 17th. And just another quick reminder, I'm going to try to find the link at some point, but there is no connection between being registered to vote and being called to jury duty. I can't explain that more strongly. And I'm sure we'd be able to find that link at the Secretary of State's website. I'm going to personally try to get that out. But I have had a number of people tell me they're afraid to register because they don't want to be called to jury duty. And I understand. I understand that, but there's no link, so...
Both elements of civic duty, but...
I understand, but I also understand, you know, people's concern. So just again, the last day to register to vote is October 17th at the town clerk's office, or you can do it online, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Thank you. I also was going to mention the Shane Give Thanks event on, and Philadelphia Carver at the, at...
Farmers Market.
The Farmers Market on Sunday from 12 to 4:00. And again, canned food, as non-perishable as possible is usually what's preferred, but they appreciate all donations, and so we urge everyone to stop by and say hi. You get to meet Shane there, who's just a pistol, so that it's a great event, and I urge everyone to participate. I was also going to mention the elementary school open house. The board had the opportunity to tour the building. I was knocked over. It was spectacular. I really was very, very impressed with what's taken place over there, the attention to detail. I think we've put something together that's going to serve the elementary school kids in town for generations to come, and I was just really, really happy to see the end result after all the work that's gone into this by the building committee and all our team that's been working on it, but also just a reward for everyone that voted for this in town. And I think even those that might have been a little skeptical are going to be very enthused to see what we've come up with.
Very impressive building.
Yep. The other thing I was going to mention is that the Mass Municipal Association has a meeting, their annual meeting comes up mid-January, and they have some contests that various towns are invited to participate in. One of them is the Community Innovative Program. And I was going to suggest to our town administrator and assistant town administrator that I think we would be well-served to put together an outline of this program that we have developed here. I think it was Steve Pratt, Dan Ryan, and Roger Shores that were on the original committee to come up with the...
And Paul Duff.
And Paul Duff for the, excuse me, that came up with the idea of using personal property, new growth, to create a capital building fund, capital stabilization fund that has allowed us to move forward, construct a new fire station without having to increase the burden on taxpayers in town, to do all the renovations over at the high school, again, without having to increase the burden of taxes. And we're going to be constructing a new police station, all through using this mechanism. So I would ask our administrative team to put something together and submit it, because while I know some richer towns have been able to do this sort of thing without having to increase taxes, I think this, for a town of our socioeconomic value, I think this is really cutting edge, and I think we should get credit for what we've done here. So I would ask that we submit something. And Mr. Dunham, who couldn't be with us here tonight, he's working, asked me to mention that recruiting for the fire department, I think everyone knows that we have a fire department that matches up to full-time departments around us, and ours is a call department that just does an incredible job. And one of the keys to remaining a top-notch department is the flow of volunteers and the recruits that we get to join the fire department. So applications can be obtained at the fire dispatch office from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Again, October 1st is the deadline for submitting those applications, and I would urge anybody that has an interest. The town benefits in so many ways financially, I think, just the morale within the community, the pride that we take in the department and what they are able to accomplish and what we have over there. So I would urge you to, if you're considering that, to give that some serious thought. With that, we have a request for approval for a task force for tackling invasive species growing in Carver. Mr. Milonowski, you want to expand on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think in your packet, you'll find a proposed temporary committee for this function. And if I could just read the purpose. Carver is a farming community, and many people's livelihoods rely on agriculture. In addition, the town has many ponds and other natural resources that are used by the public at large. Today, we face many challenges with invasive species of plants that can produce millions of seeds and left unchecked will clog our ponds and destroy the natural beauty of Carver. This committee is charged with analyzing the current impacts in Carver to our ponds, roadways, and other areas. Determine what the impacts will be in Carver without any mitigation from the town, if left unchecked. Explore what issues exist with current regulations and should be changed, if any. Develop solutions to mitigate this unchecked growth in the town to provide the town administration, and if necessary, town meeting articles or funding support to eradicate this growth. And with that, I proposed putting together a membership made of members from 13 different committees around town, from the Community Preservation Committee, the Board of Health, the Agricultural Commission, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, Capital Outlay, North Carver Water District, Recreation Committee, Assessing Board, Earth Removal Committee, Board of Selectmen, Historic District Commission, and the Finance Committee. And my hope is that by pulling in all these resources, that this task force will be able to identify, you know, what steps the town should take to eradicate these species, because it is having an impact on the town and on our ponds. As you heard tonight with Stephen Cole with the MVP grant, this committee can also help with that grant as well, because some of these growth is occurring to some of our climate changes as well. So again, it's, I know the DPW has looked at and is trying to tackle some of the Japanese knot wheat. When I was at the Earth Removal Committee, I got an education from Gary Garretson as to the proper two weeks of the year when you should actually try to put the herbicides on the Japanese knot wheat, and if you miss that window, it's really tough to kill it. But again, my point being is with people like that, when you pull them all together, I would hope that they can come back with a recommendation to the administration and to town meeting that if there is some additional funding we need to put into preserving our natural resources, that this group should be able to focus on that.
And the intent is for them to have their recommendations for the 2019 town meeting, and then this committee would dissolve at that time?
That is correct.
And are you looking for us to approve this committee or take any action?
Yes, I'm asking you to authorize me to go forward and establish this committee as described in the document.
Pleasure of the board?
Since I'm, he's proposing me being on the committee?
Pardon me?
My name is proposed on the committee?
I was going to say, are any of these people aware that they are proposed to be on the committee?
No, that's why I didn't mention their names. I just mentioned the committees.
Well, I'm just wondering about my ability to vote. Am I appointing myself?
I don't think that there's any financial benefit that you'll be getting out of this. So I think you can vote on this.
Okay.
And these people that are listed here, they will be asked if they want to participate?
They will be asked, yes.
Yes, okay.
And they'll be told when they're going to meet.
So is that a motion, Mr. Townsend?
Well, I just, I'll make a motion. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure. Second, second. Okay, discussion.
I think it's a great idea. I know a number of towns have had these issues with the invasive species. I just wonder if we want to open it up and see if there's a couple of folks in town that we might want to add, you know, members of the public that might be good for this, one of these task force. They may have, we may have someone out there that has all kinds of knowledge that we could use.
Yeah, I mean, anyone can participate in this process. It's not meant to be exclusive. It's just meant to, you know, there's a short window, and it's trying to get people that we know that, you know, have wide diversity in here so we can cover all the different aspects, but certainly would love to have more people participate.
So do we think if the membership is going to be these 13 folks, could we possibly make the membership 15 or 16 people and leave a couple of spots for the general public?
Absolutely.
I think that would be, that would be great. Do I need to propose, make a motion to...
No, I don't think so. I mean, this is the 13 that we'd start with, and if we have more people that are interested, we would just add them to it.
But I think I'd like to get the word out there that we are looking for additional people, because I think you make an excellent point. We may have a scientist among us that is, this is their second nature to them, and we could use their expertise.
Exactly.
So that, definitely, so in voting this, we're not limiting it to this, but we're simply naming these. Again, some of these people may decide they don't want to serve and that you need replacements anyway.
That's correct.
Excuse me. All right, we have a motion and second endorsing the creation of this committee. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We move on now to a discussion of approval for the Economic Development Task Force for New and Renewable Energy.
So, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, you've heard me talk about, you know, we have two economic projects that we're working on in the town of Carver. One is obviously the Route 44 development, and that's going to take many years in the making for that to happen. That's a long-range plan. With that, though, our second form of economic development has clearly been our solar projects. And with that now comes battery storage capacity tied into the solar projects or independently tied into the grid. I bring your attention to when we approved the elementary school is that we negotiated a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes or a tax agreement with Borrego Solar at the Make Peace property that generated about $100,000 in income a year in revenue. The board decided to take that $100,000 and apply that directly to the debt exclusion, thereby reducing down everybody's taxes just from that action, that they had voted to increase their taxes by about 10%, just by that action. So clearly, these solar projects have benefited the community. I also point out that the solar projects or battery storage don't produce schoolchildren. No one checks out a library book. Tom Walsh doesn't have to respond to any type of medical emergencies, and most importantly, the police don't have to worry about anybody drinking while under the influence at these solar projects. So they are net generating revenue to the town. Historically in the town, we, our first solar project that happened about five, six years ago was really the only project that had any, had any type of controversy. And since then, we have permitted, you know, a dozen or so projects without any controversy. But with that, as was presented to this board last year, is that our zoning regulations do need to be relooked at. And the planning board attempted to do that last year, and the planning board brought forward at town meeting their recommendations to do that. And I think that did not pass town meeting, and in part because it may not have been as broad of a discussion as needed to happen. So with that, what I'm proposing to do is that we set up a similar type of task force, and if I could read the purpose on that, to look at changes in the marketplace, including demand and technology advances as this relates to solar and battery storage. Discuss the economic benefits that the town of Carver has from these to fund our schools and local government. Explore what issues exist with the current regulations. Where can the current regulations be modified to improve those regulations? Develop solutions to fix issues and respond to the changing marketplace that supports the economic growth of the town while balancing the possible impacts to neighboring houses, if any, in a fair and responsible way. So, you know, clearly, where there may be some impacts to any existing residential, that needs to be properly mitigated and buffered. Absolutely, it categorically has to happen. But where you don't have those impacts, then the town should be focused, in my belief, on trying to promote the solar and the battery storage around in town to help us be able to pay our bills. Again, provide... Again, provided there are no direct impacts to the neighbors or those impacts can be mitigated. So with that, I've also proposed an 11-member committee that could be added to if someone's of interest.
I might add that the purpose of that committee is to come up with recommendations for changes to the bylaws. I remember we had quite a discussion.
Yep.
At last year's town meeting about battery storage.
Yep.
And nobody felt that that had really been adequately addressed. So I think this time around, if we know we've had a task force that specifically been charged in looking at solar complexes and battery storage, and then I assume they'd have to work with the planning board, because these would probably come through the planning board.
That's correct. I mean, what we did pass at town meeting, the battery storage authorization, so that we can do battery storage, but it was some of the regulations and the bylaws that were not looked at for solar which need to have some additional attention done to it. So, you know, again, I need to emphasize that this is really what is helping to sustain our economic growth in the town to be able to pay our tax bills. So it's something that we have to figure out where the balance is. And with that, I've recommended getting someone from the Board of Health, the Finance Committee, the Earth Removal and Agricultural Commission, the School Committee. I mean, I think it's important for someone from the School Committee to be on here, too, just because of, you know, they're in desperate need of additional revenue, too, so they should be part of the process. Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Capital Outlay, Assessing Board, Board of Selectment, Historic District Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
And do any of these people know that they've been recommended for these positions?
No, they do not, although I think Alan Jermaine may have overseen me talking about this, so he may have a sense that as chairman of the Finance Committee, his services may be called upon, which he has graciously agreed to do.
Does he know that? I just did find out.
So again, I think, you know, the purpose of these two task forces is to bring recommendations to town meeting. You've got a diverse group of people, maybe some extras that want to join here, and then, you know, put something on the table for town meeting to decide whether or not they want to vote in favor of or not after it's gone through the planning board.
And this committee would also dissolve at the 2019 town meeting?
That is correct, yes.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I've actually had some, a fair amount of experience with bylaws and renewable energy, and I'm hoping I could be on that committee, too.
I don't see any reason why not. We sort of established the fact that it's not a closed-ended committee.
Yep, per Mark's suggestion that we.
Yeah, and I just, just for both of these committees, I think it's important, and perhaps the press could let everyone know that we are open to other people serving on these task forces if they have the particular knowledge we're looking for, right?
Yep, that's right, sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
I believe we just had Ms. Hewen volunteer.
There you go.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll make a motion to approve. Second?
Second, sorry.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. And again, that, this is, both of these committees are significant, but certainly, I think, anybody that was following what we've done with the school bond and so forth, I mean, we reduced the cost to the homeowner on their taxes, you know, fairly significantly by having some of these solar pledges dedicated to paying off the school bond.
Mm-hmm.
All right, next up is, let's see, a discussion with the chair and vice chair of the Board of Selectment and School Committee with Administrations. Is that simply announcing that we're having a meeting?
Right, I think what we're going to do is just the superintendent and myself and the two finance folks, we meet on a regular basis, and we thought it would be appropriate to also have some additional meetings with the chair and vice chair of each one of the boards, so the eight of us can meet. And so it's more of just a notice that we're just going to be having these type of discussions in the future, and clearly anything that's discussed will always be brought back to both boards for their review.
All right, because neither, nothing needs to be posted, because you don't have a quorum at any of these meetings.
That's correct.
All right, and then we have KP Law, Copman and Page is, has told us that their rates are increasing from $180 an hour to $185 an hour.
That is correct.
And do we need to vote to accept that increase or simply acknowledge?
Since you hire KP, that's the consultant or the legal firm, they report directly to the Board of Selectment, it is appropriate for you to vote to support that rate increase.
All right, any, well, let's get it on the table for discussion. Someone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion. There being none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I have to say, these rates are very favorable to us compared to what other municipalities are paying that are not using KP, and we get quality service.
That's good to know.
We have a request from the Joint Base Cape Cod, from Joint Base Cape Cod for donation of two stretchers. It's my understanding that we have recently changed the type of stretchers that we're using in town, and the ones that we had are no longer actually work appropriately with our equipment, so these are excess. And apparently, the Joint Base Cape Cod is, can make use of them, and they're asking for us to approve the transfer of the property from our emergency department to the Joint Base Cape Cod.
Correct.
So moved.
I'll say, do we know for sure that Tom Walsh, that we do not, don't need him over there? That's, no, second.
Mark, Tom's already gotten rid of him. He's already sent him down to.
That's great. I guess we better approve.
All right, motion made. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, minutes of the June 26 joint meeting with the School Committee. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve. They looked good to me when I read them earlier.
Motion to approve?
Second, sorry.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The minutes of June 26, 2018 Selectment's meeting.
Mr. Chair, I just had one minor thing that I wanted to add.
Please do so.
Okay, so under citizens' participation, it mentions a citizen who questioned me about my running for state office when I ran for Selectment. I just wanted to add in there for the record, if I may, that Hewens responded that she planned to do both, and it was not unusual to hold both positions, because I know I said that, it was just not in the minute, and.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The minutes of July 31. The pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve.
The only thing here was under the Pine Street right-of-way. It doesn't, probably doesn't really matter, but it says motion by, and then there's no name. It's probably just a typo.
All right, so the, you want me to amend the motion, Mark?
Yes, absolutely.
To find and include whoever made the motion? And is that a second?
Yes, second.
With that amendment? Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And the minutes of August 24.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. We have a request for approval of a road race, Boston Children's Hospital, Miles for Miracles, on November 25 at 2:30 p.m. Is that the one taking place at Ediville?
Well, the one at Ediville is, I think it's.
I think it is.
It may be taking place, but there's another Ediville Road Race, too, so I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, this one also goes on public roads, but it's in Ediville.
Okay. But I believe that all the appropriate departments, police, fire, have signed off on this?
Yep.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Request for a one-day special license, Patriot Bartending Services at the Sportsman's Club. I believe that's for an adult night out fundraiser.
Carver Public Schools Parents Night Out.
Carver Public Schools Parents Night Out.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The 2018 nuclear exercises, these are the formal exercises that we are done in coordination with FEMA to make sure that the town is ready for any nuclear emergencies that might arise as a result of our proximity to the pilgrim station. Just so everyone's aware, there's going to be a tabletop exercise tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. Then there's a full-day practice on October 10, and then a FEMA-graded practice on November 7, 2018, just for everyone's awareness. There is no need for executive session this evening, so I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Quinavara?
Yes, sir.
You skipped over the next meeting, 11:00 to 10:00, so forth and so on.
Well, I sort of did that deliberately, because we throw those out, but those are probably going to be adjusted. But the next scheduled meetings are October 2, November 6, and December 4, but there's probably going to be.
And September 25.
Well, you don't really want to have one on November 6, do you?
Yes, I was going to suggest that we change, consider changing that date.
Yeah.
Okay, that is election day, so, again, these are scheduled, but subject to change. So October 2, we'll be having a meeting. November 6, that'll probably change, because that's election day, and it's a tough day to hold a meeting. And then 12:04, but we are getting into the season where we'll be meeting two or three times a month, so additional meetings will be coming up.
As well as September 25, correct?
Next week for the bond meeting, correct. Okay, now I'll accept.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Jermaine, we okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We are now adjourned. Thank you.